I'd like to call the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Meeting for June 15th to order. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, I was starting to feel lonely over on this side.
The Secretary note that all members of the Commission are present except for Commissioner Peters. I will take a Commission motion for the minutes for the May 18th meeting unless there are any corrections to those as distributed.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of last month's meeting, the May 18th meeting.
You've heard the motion, all those in favor, oh, sorry, need a second. Second, all right, second from Commissioners, from the Vice Chair. You've heard the motion and the second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. All right, public comments, is there anyone from the public who would like to discuss anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Now would be the perfect time. All right, going once, going twice, okay. Disclosure of ex parte communications?
None, thank you.
All right, no, none here, all right. Okay, moving on to new business. Case number 11-200-0001, the Amendment to the Palm Valley Crossing PAD. I will open the public hearing and have the staff presentation. Take it away Brett.
Thank you Chairman Lox, members of the Commission, members of the public, good evening. Before us this evening are two PAD amendments. The first one is the Palm Valley Crossing PAD amendment, and I've got an aerial photo here just to show the boundaries. And some of you may recall there was a First Amendment to the Palm Valley Crossing PAD in 2006, and so I'll give you a little bit of background for those who weren't around for that one, because they are a little bit related here. This particular PAD amendment only applies to 12 of the, I guess, 55 acres in Palm Valley Crossing PAD. And so we have, in this application, we have seven separate commercial property owners that have joined together to submit this application requesting an amendment of expanding the permitted uses on the lots, and also a minor change to the signage standards that are associated with the freeway commercial lots. And so I first wanted to show this aerial photo so you can see the subject property is highlighted in red, south of I-10, east of Litchfield Road. You can see Test Drive here, Auto Drive here, so Yates, Pontiac GMC is right here, the new Ride Now facility is here, Rodeo Ford is right here. Okay, I have two exhibits up here, and I'm first going to zoom in on the 2006 PAD amendment, which is right here. Just a brief background, in 2006, Suncor submitted a PAD amendment to expand the permitted uses for 13 of the internal lots, all of the lots shown within that heavy black line. And their intent was to spark commercial development. And at the time when they submitted that application, they also wanted to include all the freeway lots, they wanted to include lots 1 through 5. The city kind of recommended that they leave those in auto-related commercial, we really hoped that the auto dealers, you know, that they would somehow find us. And so we urged Suncor to exclude those, and they did that. And since the time that this PAD amendment was approved, I mentioned that Ride Now Powersports constructed on Lot 3. We also have the Palm Valley Church located within an existing building over where, next to where the old Albertson's building was. And there were also three flex industrial buildings developments that were constructed. And the applicants have noted that of the auto dealerships that might locate in the West Valley, most of them have chose to locate in the Avondale Auto Mall, which is just east of Palm Valley Crossing. And so as a result, they are coming before us requesting an additional expansion of uses. So you can see, I'm going to move to the other exhibit now, so you can see the lots that were associated with the previous PAD amendment. Now this new PAD amendment only takes in the lots that are within this heavy black line. So the ones that are shaded gray are included in this PAD amendment. And I know if you just look at this exhibit, it can be a little confusing, so I want to try to quickly walk through the major changes here. Previously, the lots adjacent to the freeway were restricted to auto-related commercial. And the applicant is proposing that the use list be expanded to include what they call a modified C2 district. And so what they've done is they've, all these property owners have met together with the auto dealers, they've gone through our general commercial zoning district, and they've taken out the uses that they don't think are appropriate, and they've called it the modified C2 district. And they would essentially like to add this, an additional layer of uses, so the auto uses are still permitted, and auto dealers would still be permitted, but they would like to add the modified C2 layer to lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5A, B, and C, as well as 16, and also 15C and 15B there. So they'd like to add the modified C2 to those lots. And also, you can see there's these other two lots here, 11 and 15A. Previously, in 2006, when Suncor did a PAD amendment, they created a new land use category called service commercial. It was actually called service commercial slash commerce, and we called it SC. And Sunbelt, and the applicants would like to add this designation to lots 5B and C, which are 5B, 5C, and also 11 and 15A. Again, expanding another layer on there. Previously, Lot 5C had a land use designation of kind of a flex industrial, it was called IND, which was really a flex industrial, a limited commercial land use. So essentially, that's what's being requested in terms of land use. Now, are there any questions about land use before I shift on to signage? Okay. Additionally, there, I mentioned before that there were, the development guidelines for this center were created a long time ago, and they were quite restrictive when it comes to freeway signage. The lots that back onto the freeway are only allowed to have a half square feet of permitted signage for each one lineal foot of building frontage, which is about a fourth, a quarter of what we typically would allow today. And so what we've done is we've looked at some of the adjacent centers, for example, Palm Valley Cornerstone, which is just to the northwest, and the request is to really have the same amount of signage, which would be two square feet of permitted signage for each one lineal feet of building frontage. And so this amount of signage would allow the size of signs that you see currently on Rodeo Ford, what they have now, would be able to be built on those other future lots when they develop. So we think that it's necessary to make those signs standards comparable to the sign standards in adjacent neighboring commercial centers. And we had a citizen review meeting on June 2nd for this case, and we did have 10 residents attend that meeting from the adjacent neighborhood to the west, or excuse me, to the east. And several of the residents expressed concern about having like a bar or a nightclub, or those types of uses on any of the lots that were adjacent to their homes, really these lots here. And, you know, their concern was outdoor noise, outdoor patio type use, and they also expressed concern about potential crime associated with those types of land uses, they reminded us of the Goodyear Live application, which we saw quite a while ago. And we had a discussion with the residents about how bars are not allowed to be located within 500 feet of a residential property line. So, I mean, essentially, that renders these two parcels unable for a bar to really develop because of the 500-foot requirement. But they still felt pretty strongly about this, about extending the restriction. And as a result of those concerns that were raised, the applicants have revised the PAD, and it now specifically prohibits standalone bars and nightclubs on lots 4, 5A, 5B, and And that essentially concludes the presentation. Staff can answer any questions that you might have. We also have, I mentioned that there were seven separate commercial property owners associated with this application. Sunbelt Holdings, Troy Mortensen has kind of been the spokesperson for the applicants. So with that.
Thanks Brett. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Mr. Keith.
Thank you, thank you Brett. I certainly understand the concerns of neighbors with respect to the restriction on the bar and nightclub use on 5B and 5C. I wasn't, I'm not too keen on that restriction for lots 4 and 5A, and I guess I'd just like to understand more of where they're coming from, if we're just collectively comparing that kind of use to the Goodyear Live application, which I don't know that that's fair to compare that particular facility to all similar types of facilities. I mean, if it's a high-end like a Barcelona, will it be acceptable? Or if it's a multi-venue type facility, will it be acceptable if that's the case? Or really, will that type of facility just not be permitted on those lots, period?
Chairman Lox, members of the Commission, there was a lot of discussion about, we tried to get at what is negative about the use that you don't like. It's apparent, it's obvious that a lot of the residents in that neighborhood do a lot of walking along Auto Drive and Test Drive. And, you know, they expressed concern about the crime that they've had in their neighborhood in the past, and they kind of talked about how things have been getting better, and they want to continue to make sure that it continues to stay positive. Their thought was, I think, noise was a big topic that they expressed. They wanted to make sure that there were no outdoor patio-type bar uses that would be too noisy, that they would hear at their homes. They also talked about just the uses or the activities that may take place in the parking lot, things like that. And in this particular instance, we have Ride Now, which is here, and Rodeo Ford, which is here. I mean, we have existing buildings that are already there, and there was some concern raised, well, you know, what if these auto dealers leave? We've got a big building, what are we going to see there? We don't want to have these types of uses. And I can also let the applicant may want to mention or add to that as well.
And you just spoke to one of the points I was going to bring up, in the case, heaven forbid, that one of those uses were to go away, and they would be open to a new use coming in to those facilities, I would hate to have that restriction in the case that such a user might want to occupy that building. I know, from personal experience, a facility that's kind of a multi-venue entertainment, all-ages type facility has been looking for space, and so something like that, that's more of a high-end type of a concept, I think would be fairly generally acceptable, and you can't compare it to a Goodyear Live. So that's why I was just trying to understand exactly what the issue was from the resident's perspective. And I guess at the end of the day, if the applicant is okay with that restriction, I'm okay with it too, but just wanted to understand that a little bit better.
While we're waiting, maybe I'll ask Harvey while Brett's looking, but wouldn't, if one of those uses were to consider going in there, isn't there other layers of scrutiny, either use permit or liquor permits, that a potential occupant would have to go through that would allow for, you know, resident participation and/or opposition?
Yes, there'd be some other requirements I'd have to comply with, but a liquor license wouldn't be, it would be a land use issue, so the City Council wouldn't have a basis to turn it down based on a liquor license. If a use permit's required, then Council may have a little bit more discretion. But it's the safest thing to do is to make it a prohibited use, if you don't want, if you're not sure what type of nightclub or bar you're going to, could go there in the future.
Right, but I think what Commissioner Keith was suggesting is depending on the use, there might be some fantastic, you know, upscale thing that wants to come in, but, you know, they'd have to come in through a PAD amendment versus a use permit, which, you know, that hurdle may be a little bit more difficult to accomplish, but...
No, I was just going to say, I agree with Commissioner Keith, that these parcels and the 500-foot restriction, that should satisfy these homeowners' concerns about that. I mean, it's clearly not a noise issue, it's next to the freeway, and it's far enough away from these residences that I don't think it would negatively impact it. If I was a homeowner, I would actually request a gate next there so I could walk over to the bar. Sorry.
Well, there is not very easy access to lots 5B and 5C, is there? There's only that road off of Van Buren and Test Drive?
Chairman Lox, members of the Commission, the way to access those lots would be southbound Litchfield Road, you have a turn onto Test Drive there, you could also turn north off of Van Buren from here. Oh, you can't see that from right there.
Yeah, the one on the east side, but yeah, I mean, you have to really want to get there, is I guess is my point.
There was a lot of discussion at the citizen review meeting, there was a commercial broker that was there, and, you know, he did talk about, are we really going to see a restaurant use here? I don't know, it is tucked away, I don't know. But I did want to note though, just the exact verbiage that was proposed, was that bar slash cocktail lounge slash nightclub would be subject to the following limitations, and the first one would be that that use shall be prohibited as a standalone use on those four lots. And then it goes on to clarify that a bar is permitted on those lots if it's located within a hotel.
And that implies that cocktail lounge nightclub are not permitted, even if they're part of a hotel? Right?
Commissioner, Chairman Lox, members of the Commission, I guess that depends on how you're interpreting it, it definitely is a good question though, I don't know.
Any other questions from the Commission for Brett, otherwise, you know, I bring the applicant up and get to grill him. All right, thanks Brett. Mr. Mortensen, please state your name and address the record, please.
Commissioner, or Chairman Lox and members of the Commission, my name is Troy Mortensen with Sunbelt Holdings, 6720 North Scottsdale Road, Scottsdale, Arizona. Just kind of to piggyback on the conversation that was going on, you know, originally it was proposed, you know, the lot owners in those areas, it was just the 500-foot restriction on the bars, and through the, you know, citizen review meeting, the landowners went back and discussed that internally, and in wanting to get a positive vote and to push this through for the flexibility in the zoning that they're requesting, or in the C2 usage, they were, they considered giving that up, I guess, as a use on those properties, just to kind of make peace with the neighborhood. So, you know, as they were looking for, you know, a more broader use, and would be happy to have that use, but they would also be, you know, available to let that go if that was needed.
Great, any other questions for Mr. Mortensen?
No, I'd just like to comment that I think that that was a very wise decision, and I commend you for doing it. I think that we keep coming back for different things to amend this and amend that, and I think what you proposed is perfectly fine. And if there's some other, if there's another need at another time, I'm sure it'll come before us again.
Yep. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this case? All right. That was my next. Nope, any other comments from the Commission?
No. Mr. Chairman, Brett?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Sorry. Page nine, number 21. I think the likelihood of a typewriter and business machine sales and repair is about as likely as getting a loud nightclub in one of those existing buildings. So, I just thought that was funny as well. Someone's got to liven up these meetings. Mine's what we meet.
Say you let me know when you find that person. All right, any other Commission comments? All right, I will close the public hearing and take Commission action. Mr. Schlosser.
I make a motion to approve case number 11-200-0001, and I would actually like to exclude those two parcels from that restriction. I forget which the numbers were. So that those two buildings, that they would have that, they would have that ability.
Parcels 4 and 5A?
Yeah, 4 and 5A, that those not be included, only parcels 5B and 5C, you would have that bar and nightclub restriction.
Second.
All right, you have heard the motion and a second from Commissioner Keith to recommend approval with the modified stipulation on the bar and nightclub usage. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, for the reason I stated. I think it should stand as the initial recommendation was. Other than that, it's fine.
Okay, by your vote of five ayes and one nay, you have recommended approval of case 11-200-0001 with the revised stipulation. Moving on to case 11-210-0001, the Amendment to Palm Valley Loop 303 PAD Development Parameters, I will open the public hearing and take staff presentation.
Thank you Chairman Lox, members of the Commission, members of the public. This is a, excuse me, this is a PAD amendment for what we're now calling PV303. As you can see on this aerial photo, the subject property is generally located between Indian School Road and Camelback Road on both sides of the Loop 303. Does that help at all? The existing zoning of the property is PAD with a land use designation of warehouse slash industrial. You may recall, this originally started as a development called Phase 6 Perimeter West, and Suncor labeled this perimeter west. They then, I guess that was 2005, and they then followed up with a Palm Valley 303 PAD. They've since constructed a very large building here, 450,000 square foot building, and now the marketing name is going to be PV303. And there were a number of phases associated with PV303, this particular PAD amendment only, is only subject to Phase 1 and Phase 2, which are highlighted in red on this exhibit. As many of you know, to the north of this site is Camelback Road and agricultural land with a Luke Air Force Base land use designation, which unincorporated Maricopa County. To the south, we have Palm Valley, or PV303 Phase 3, which does have some commercial land use there. And also, you have Palm Valley Phase 5, which is right here, and you can see portions of Pebble Creek as well. To the east of this area, there, it's Phase, what is it, Phase 6? Phase 9. Which phase is east? 4, I'm sorry. Phase 4 is east, it has designations of light industrial, commercial, office, and flex industrial. Excuse me, I apologize. Let me try to start over here. Okay, I talked about what was south, now I'm going to talk about what is east. And you can see Palm Valley Phase 5 here. Phase 4, which is, these areas here.
Oh, you do have that exhibit ready, thanks Troy.
Okay, thank you, this exhibit does a much better job. You can see, so the subject property is just Phases 1 and 2. So to the east, we have light industrial, commercial, office, and flex industrial, which are these areas here. And to the west is all vacant property, zone agricultural. And Sunbelt Holdings has submitted this application for a PAD amendment, it is 378 acres, and the applicant has reported interest in this property by both potential users and by the brokerage community. The applicant has reported that the regulations, the unique regulations prohibiting roll-up doors adjacent to the key roadways may prevent certain warehouse or other distribution type uses from locating in this area. And the applicant has stated that for some building types, the current industry applicant has stated that for some building types, the current industry standard for certain warehouse and distribution uses require roll-up doors on up to three sides of buildings. And so, the applicant is proposing to amend the PAD amendment. The language that is included in your staff report is right here, which essentially allows staff to have the ability to allow small portions of a building to have roll-up doors facing the key roadways like the 303, if the following screening standards are met. And those screening standards would be, number one, a combination of a landscape berm and solid masonry wall, which that wall would be matched to the development. And that would help screen the roll-up doors from public view in the adjacent roadway, in addition to providing two continuous offset rows of trees to assist there. So, staff is supportive of the proposed PAD amendment as worded here before you, essentially as long as the added screening provisions are carefully followed. And it's important to note that staff would not support this request if proposed roll-up doors were along the entire street frontages, or along even the majority of the frontages of the specified roadways outlined in the PAD, as it would be a significant deviation from the vision of the original Palm Valley 303 PAD and design guidelines. And so, the proposed provisions provide that a portion or small section of a building may have roll-up doors if those strict screening standards are followed. And we had a citizen review meeting on this project as well on June 2nd, and we had three people show up for that meeting. Two individuals were representing the Palm Valley Phase Five Property Association, and then there was one gentleman who owned a local industrial business just to the, I think just to the west, the southwest of the subject property. And we did hear some concern at the meeting about relaxing development standards. Two of the meeting attendees noted that, you know, Suncor implemented a very high standard. They always did a great job with their design guidelines. And they were concerned that it would potentially open the door to, you know, amending the entire area, and they wanted to make sure that their, the area adjacent to Phase Five was protected. And, you know, they said that they didn't want to see those doors. We, so we had some discussion about that. And also, at the meeting, the local industrial business owner did express his support for this PAD amendment. He was happy to see this type of development taking place. So that concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Representatives of Sunbelt are also available to answer any questions.
Thank you Brett. Does anyone from the commission have questions for staff? Commissioner Williams?
Brett, we're probably talking about roll-up doors that would be on the side of the building facing the 303, rather than on the east side facing Phase Five, aren't we?
Chairman Lox, members of the commission, the roll-up doors proposing to face any of the roadways would only apply to these two areas that are highlighted in red, Phases One and Two. And in this instance, they may, they may face the 303. The, I think the concern was, they said, you know, maybe in a year or two, or you'll come before us and request to change the development standards next to our existing development. And, you know, I can let the applicant kind of add to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brett?
Just a point of clarification, just to be absolutely certain, the difference of a word, and, it's the wall or the berm and the two rows of trees, right? It's not an or situation.
Chairman Lox, members of the commission, the intent was to provide both the berm and the wall, and the two rows of trees. So essentially, four, four elements.
Thank you Brett. Welcome back, Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you Chairman Lox and members of the commission. My name is Troy Mortensen, 6720 North Scottsdale Road, Scottsdale, Arizona, Sunbelt Holdings. Just wanted to briefly kind of introduce ourselves, too. When I came up before, I did not introduce Sunbelt Holdings. As you may know, we had purchased a lot of the holdings, really all the holdings that Suncor had in Goodyear. We recognize their legacy and all the work that they had done here, and a lot of the developments they've done. And so, we're pleased with the properties and very happy with the properties that we've purchased. And so, I did want to give you one thing, too, if I can approach you guys. What I've got is an information booklet. This is for PV303 and kind of the vision that we see for this property. A lot of the, you know, forward planning was done by Suncor in the zoning and the PAD that's currently there. We've taken that and are very happy with, you know, how it's been planned in the past. And just want to kind of note, you know, as you go through, you know, we really see this as a premier location in the valley for this type of development. This is, you know, industrial, warehouse, distribution, also the, you know, flex industrial, light industrial, and commercial uses that are proposed there. And so, this is an information booklet that has been going out. And as you know, we've been working with, or as you may know, we've been working with economic development, and also planning staff. We've been meeting with them on a monthly basis on a myriad of the properties that we have. And there's been, there's been interest, and there's, from companies, and there's been RFPs that have come through, through economic development. And that was kind of the impetus for why we're here tonight with this use. So there's been a particular user that is requested, or that's requesting this use of having these roll-up doors that will face the 303. And so, you know, kind of Brett kind of touched on, you know, the logistics portion of this. Kind of the new wave of some of these distribution centers is, is they actually do the receiving on the narrow side of the building. So all the cargo comes into that narrow side of the building through really kind of a minimal amount of doors comparative to the entire property. And, you know, from there, it logistically flows through the building on a spine system and basically gets routed into, you know, the next bays, the trucks, and locations that can take that away. And so, so this use has been, you know, we'll probably see in the future more of this. It's been seen around the valley. I know, I think Amazon has a similar configuration. I think Home Depot has another location that has a similar kind of configuration. And so, with this, we're trying to prepare, we, you know, in showing the site plan to this planning staff, it was brought up that this was in the PAD, that there was a restriction on these roll-up doors facing the 303, facing cotton. And there's actually facing Camelback and, and Indian School Road. And so, that kind of prohibits the use and some of the abilities for these types of uses to locate there. And so, with the language proposed, I, I don't have it on, put that, I need to put this, yeah, there's a board, you know, the board that shows, we wanted to provide kind of an example of what we thought it would look like. Yeah, that one right there. I don't know that we even need that other one that was in the book, but... This is, this is showing, you know, relative, we've received the grades on the ADOT 303. They're at about 95% plans right now, and so, we use the relative grades on the 303, showing that and showing a proposed grade, finished floor elevation for that, for this building. And so, you can see kind of from the site visibility triangle that as you're looking over there, there's quite an easement, you know, there's 100, and I believe it's 150 feet to property line on the 303. And then there's another 150 feet to the actual building. So you're kind of over 300 feet by the time you get to the building. And so visually looking, from the freeway, looking towards the building, you know, the trees and the wall properly screens out the roll-up doors, and you're actually looking, you know, kind of almost midway up the building and towards the parapet on the building would be visible from the freeway. So, I mean, we believe that the standards are appropriate to screen out, you know, the roll-up doors. One thing we struggled with... One thing we struggled with was finding the proper language in this to not kind of impede ourselves on future potential uses. You know, the, we're kind of going around with a portion of the building, you know, and what is defined as a portion of the building. And then, you know, less than 50%, we were kind of proposed, maybe we could use approximately less than 50% as kind of an option, given a little bit of plus or minus. I don't, it's not our intent to, you know, line a full 100% side of a building with doors. But what we're asking for is for the community director, or does it need to have, you know, the discretion on the use and on, you know, site plan, when looking at site plan and how it's being screened to relax those standards in specific cases. Also, I wanted to note, you know, these, and Brett kind of illustrated it, too, is this is only in Phase One and Two, the areas where, you know, there's warehouse, industrial, you know, they're positioned, you know, in the Luke flight path. And so, this is a very appropriate use for that land area. And I was going to mention one more thing here. So, I mean, these buildings would, you know, as they come here, we would propose to have, you know, some doors to have some flexibility. And what I was looking to note is, is the PAD will still have the restriction on doors. It's only on an exception basis by the community development director to relax those. So, are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mortensen? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak regarding this case? Otherwise, I will take any other commission comments. Vice Chair Schlosser?
Mr. Chairman, up until this application, I wasn't even aware that roll-up doors were limited in such a way. I am all for relaxing development standards, as long as there's mitigating factors like this, the wall and the landscaping. And one thing I brought up several years ago in one of these meetings, is I think the requirement is for 24-inch box trees, but there's no description of what the trees are. And I guess my point is, you have a 24-inch box tree with a 1-inch twig in there. And this may or may not be relevant to this case, but just in the future, to maybe discuss whether or not, I think they describe it in calipers, like 4-inch caliper trees or something, which would mitigate nice. And I guess my last comment is in regards to, I don't know why they, they didn't want these roll-up doors facing the 303, but ADOT's actually in the process right now of condemning properties along this. It's going to be a full-fledged freeway here in the near future, and people are going to be going 90 miles an hour anyways, and they're not going to pay attention to it. So, and anything that will help promote or attract future employers in this downturn of the market is all right by me. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
I will make one. Recognizing that we have a budget problem, and we like to attract economic development and employers, is a great, you know, we, the city should aspire to do so. However, you know, I'm not sure in all cases where we need to just roll over and relax development standards to allow and deviate from the standards that, you know, myself and the rest of the commission, as well as the council over the last years, and staff is included in that, in sort of our high-quality development standards and the look of our community. And so, I am somewhat hesitant to give preference to allow this precedence to occur, because I know this is sort of a unique process, but you know as well as I do, that the one time we do it, it's going to be held up as an example every other time for every other application that comes to similar developments. And, you know, so I just give this warning to the commission that should we choose to recommend approval of this case, we need to be prepared for a similar exemption for the rest of the city, probably for as long as it takes for the economy to turn around and our budget situation and economic climate to improve to where it was in better days. And so, with that, I will close the public hearing and take commission action.
I have a comment. I absolutely share your concern about almost selling out, you know, to get anything in here. And I do think as we go forward, we need to be very, very careful about what we do and do what we can to not make things that, to make sure we make good business decisions based on the case at hand. And I think there are mitigating circumstances here. But I do share your concern about, you know, relaxing anything and everything just to get a business to locate here in the short term.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to further comment. That was part of my, the reason I commented the way that I did, that relaxing these is one thing, as long as we can mitigate it. But my point about not ever having known about this roll-up door restriction, what's the building that's there now, Sub Zero? I bet there's not one person besides these guys in this room that can, that can describe where those roll-up doors are on that building right now.
They're on the north side and the south side.
But it's, my point being, it's an industrial building and an industrial area, and as long as it's done nicely, and it's mitigated properly, that it's fine. We don't, I agree with both you guys, we don't need to lower our standard so much and sell ourselves to the devil. But anything we can do, as long as it's quality development, you know, we should be for that.
I'm almost in shock here. I agree with Commissioner.
But she's going to vote against me anyway.
Schlosser, I agree, and I do think that this company has done an outstanding job in terms of addressing community concerns, business concerns, and city concerns. And so, I'll be voting for it, as is.
She's only going to set you up and pull the rug out, you know?
She's done it before.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that, or I move, we recommend approval of case number 11-210-0001, the amendment to the Palm Valley 303 Planned Area Development. And I will agree with Commissioner Miller that the recommendation is as stated.
You've heard the motion from Commissioner Williams and a second from Vice Chair Schlosser. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered, you have recommended approval of case 11-210-0001. All right, Harvey?
Yes, Chairman, members of the commission, we have a council work session that's coming Monday night, June 20th, 5:00 PM here. And one of the items for discussion will be a review of the revisions to the design guidelines. Commission had recommended approval of that document. So, if you'd like to hear council discussion on that, it's this coming Monday night at 5:00 PM here. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, well, if there's nothing...
I move, we adjourn.